A couple of things we forgot to mention. We've got a sign-in sheet out here on the front table. It is very important that we can get everyone to sign in. So we'll have that for our record. Also, it's going to help us in our case of trying to move to a larger venue to be able to show and prove that we're having good attendance and that we need more space. So that's going to help us out if we can get everyone to sign in. Also, there's copies of the agenda packet out there. You're more than welcome to get a copy of that. And we're going to try to also show it up here on the screen in case we don't have enough copies or make it easier for you to read. We're going to try to keep that updated as we go. So you should have all seen a copy of the minutes from our last meeting on January 26. And we reviewed these internally. Did anyone see any errors in those minutes from that meeting if you were here with us? Hearing that, I'll go ahead and sign these and enter these into approval. Come on in. We're just getting started. Okay, the next item on the agenda is our Exhibit A is the material rate increase for our landfill. This is a pretty complex material list of rate codes. Most of these codes are not used on a daily basis. The most common is going to be your 01 code that's about halfway down, which is a household municipal waste. It's going to $40 a ton. And then if you look at the code 2000, General C and D, which is the construction demolition, going to $30. The MSW code was $38.50 before. It's going to $40. And the municipal C and D was $25.50. It's going to $26. As we talked many times before, our landfill's been losing over $500,000 per year, every year for the last 16 years. There is an expansion process going on now where they borrowed a million dollars from the state to do an expansion. So we're losing half a million dollars and we're going to go borrow a million dollars and we're going to make it bigger. So we've got to try to get our landfill operation to a breakeven status at least where we're not continuing to subsidize the landfill with your property tax dollars. We've got outside commercial haulers that are bringing material into our county. And you and I are subsidizing that because some of these haulers on the C and D had rates as low as $19.50 a ton where the general rate was at $25.50. So this is going to get everything to a level playing field, get them up to $30 a ton. So everyone's paying the same rate. And so we're not in a situation that you as property tax owners are subsidizing for private business to come into our community and create a financial shortfall to our county. They'll be able to pay their fair share of bringing this waste into our county and help us get this to profitable status. We've also been able to reduce some overhead there already. So we're already realizing annualized savings that we're projecting about $255,000 just in operational reductions and efficiencies there at the landfill that we're working through. We still have a large hill to climb in getting our approval for our C and D expansion. Previous administration spent, I think round numbers around $600,000 of that million dollars just in environmental work and drilling the wells and engineering and so forth. So one of my big concerns was, was to make sure that we brought in someone to manage that operation that had the experience, a person that was very knowledgeable about the environmental impact, someone that had the credentials to be able to take a project as complexed as that who's used to working with state and federal guidelines, understanding those guidelines, and also being able to work and communicate with the EPD. So I made the decision to hire Payne Gilli. And Payne is with us tonight. Payne, raise your hand. Shannon?
Hi.
So Payne's going to be starting with us in just a few days. And as I mentioned last night on the air, his resume far exceeds the job requirements. So I'm very excited to have him on board. He's a resident of Rossville but has done a lot of work out of town working for Halliburton. And so we're tickled to have him with us. But these rates are not pleasant, but the rates are something necessary. And we've got to continue to look for additional cost savings in the operation. And so I hope under Payne's leadership, he'll be able to deliver additional efficiencies and cost savings. And also with increasing our revenue, hopefully we can get this landfill to a breakeven or possibly even a profitable status to keep you as property taxpayers from having to supplement the landfill. But it needs to stand on its own. It's set up as a proprietary business unit on our financial statement. And therefore by governmental accounting, it is supposed to stand on its own and be self-sufficient. You're not supposed to take money out of your general fund to supplement that operation. So is there any questions at this point about the landfill? Yes, Steve?
Have you done any projections on, with these additional changes on revenue? Have you done any projections to see how much revenue you will be bringing in? I mean, does it look like it is going to breakeven?
We're still going to be probably 100,000 or better short. So we're going to have to continue to get some operational efficiencies to get us breakeven.
Kind of in line with that, would that run people off? That is to say, a construction company could come in and pay an maximum amount, so when you go up two heads, these guys will all go somewhere.
It's possible that some of these outside commercial haulers may elect to go elsewhere. I know looking at the market, basically for lack of terms of competition in the market, one of the, the next closest C and D landfill that I'm aware of is either closed or, it is closed?
Birchwood.
Birchwood, thank you.
It's not closed yet.
So they're in the process of closing because they're at capacity. So we have one of the few, there's not many, but there are some, but we have one of the few C and D landfills around. So they may be able to go and negotiate rates other places and move some of that commercial waste elsewhere. And that's okay. That's a decision that they've got to make. But on our current C and D landfill, we're somewhere around probably about 18 months of it being full. So slowing down the flow wouldn't be all bad either.
Right.
Because we don't have our expansion permitted. And we don't know what else it's going to take to get that permitted. And that's one of the things that our new manager's going to have to grab by the horns real quick and figure out where we are to get that permitting done. So we're, we're running against the clock and running against the field rate of that landfill. So, but these rate changes are necessary in order to try to balance that operations budget.
Is there a general number as to how much it went up on most of these construction companies, 10 to 15%?
Well, the lowest rate we had was $19.50. And their rate went to $30.
Shannon?
Yes?
Is these white goods being recycled?
Yes. All of them are being recycled.
How much are we going to, is it going to take us? We've got 18 months left.
Roughly. I mean, that's, it's on flow rate.
Yeah, I mean, depending on how much, right. How many years are we going to add to with an expansion?
I believe the report I read was, yeah, I think it was projected around 18 to 20 years with the expansion that had been, you know, in the works of getting the permit for it. The projections was based off flow rate in that 18 to 20-year range.
Now, are we going to have to spend, is it going to take up that entire million that we had borrowed?
It probably will take more than that.
More, how much more? Do we know yet?
Don't know yet.
But they actually spent more on the engineering services than they had projected. So they actually cut into some of the other budget.
In that shop.
Yes.
I've got something. I am, I'm Steve Breper. I'm a company out of Chattanooga called Industrial Weapons Services. I'm one of those out-of-state haulers that's filling up the landfill. Few things here that I have questions about. Almost $500,000 a year loss, that's $41,000 a month. Is it primarily, is it labor? Is it fuel? Is it loans? Is it equipment? Where are these losses? How are we losing $500,000?
All the above.
I mean, in labor? What's our labor?
It's been past mismanagement. It's been lack of efficiencies. It's been low rates. It's all about pretty much everything you mentioned.
Okay. But in terms of labor, do you know where our labor budget is at the landfill?
That's been part of the problem in the past. There has been no budget.
Is it? Teresa, what do we spend in a month on labor at the landfill? How many people will we have and they each make $3,000 a month, a mission?
Which have, everything that you're raising are questions that the new manager will be addressing and looking at because we're still going to have a shortfall.
Well, I'm, these are, these are some things that this meeting directly impacts me and my business. I've been in the trash business since 1991. My feet are not wet in this at all in terms of being a greenhorn. I've owned my own business since 2003, so for 14 years I've been pushing my truck up and down the road into your landfill. You know, if it's labor, we need to look at labor. If it's fuel at the landfill, then we need to look at cost savings program on fuel. If it's loans, if we bought too nice of equipment or if we've not acquired the equipment from through the state surplus equipment, maybe we need to do that in Payne. I understand is, is very capable of this and I welcome you to this job. If it's, if it's an equipment issue, I find it hard to believe we're losing $41,000 a month. And I, and I will clarify my statement or back it up with typically to C and D, to put C and D material in a landfill, typically it's a $6 to $12 per ton cost. Now, if you've got $6 to $12 a ton and you're tripling your money or quadrupling your money if it's $6 a ton to run the landfill for every, cost-wise for every ton we put in it, and we're charging me $19.50 a ton, you've over-tripled that $6 a ton. If it's $24 a ton for me to pay, then you've quadrupled your money. A hole full of trash is a money maker. In fact, guys, the hole full of trash is the only thing in this county that makes you money. Maybe the water department. But the hole full of trash, the more trash you can put in that hole, the more money you all make because it simply takes the same amount of labor and material. And these guys that work there, if I come or if I don't come to your landfill, it doesn't matter if I show up or not. It still takes a guy on the dozer, a dozer, a person or two in Scale House. It takes Teresa doing her thing. It takes a lot of people that are there. Those are fixed costs whether I bring my $15,000 or $20,000 a month down to your landfill or Shawn Sims or any of the other private haulers that come out of Chattanooga. What are we bringing collectively out of Chattanooga? 60,000 a month to you?
A ton?
No, a month. All of us out of Chattanooga, us awful folks that are filling your landfill up. What are we bringing to the table a month? I'm bringing about 15 to 20. Shawn Sims I know is bringing 20 to 25. What's Kelvin Clark at K and K? He's bringing you probably 10,000 a month.
Yeah, he's got you a little bit off.
I mean, so we've got, we are bringing you down. It takes the same amount of people to run this landfill, whether we come or not.
That's not true.
Where are you going to, you going to get rid of your dozer?
That's not true.
Okay, where, where can we cut? If we don't come?
That's going to be left up to the new management, but we're going to need to move forward in this meeting.
All right. Well, here's, here's the other concerns. We're, we spent a lot of money in your county and we like coming to your county landfill. It's a good landfill. It's a good place to work, a good place to do our thing. BFI hauls out of their transfer station, one way 80 miles to Collinsville, Alabama to that landfill. They charge their customers $32 a ton. They bring it in, dump it out at the transfer station down on 37th Street, $32 a ton, haul it one, one way 80 miles. You've also got this problem at the landfill. This is foam. You get, how much foam do you get? How many cubic yards or tons? This stuff is horrible. It's filling your landfill up far faster than I can fill it up, but you have to take it because it's from a Walker County manufacturer. Now, if you don't have our trash to blend in with this, it'll be like laying one giant mattress out and trying to put cars and trucks in a bulldozer across it. This is arguably the biggest problem you've got. Would you agree, Randy? Josh? Skip? Are the, is this a problem? So you have to have either dirt or you're going to have to have more trash to water down the volume of this. Does anybody want to see this? Because there's tons of this stuff, rolls and rolls of it down there. And when you pull a big truck or bulldozer around on it, you can flip a bulldozer over and kill somebody. Anybody like to argue that point with me? Randy, can you flip the compact rover in a big pile of this? Yes, you can. So the foam is a problem. You're going to have to have other people's trash to put in there.
Less comment. We'll get to move forward.
A good landfill manager, I know Payne, I've heard about him and I've seen him down there. I know he will, he knows this, is looking 10 years ahead. And you're not going to be able to get out of landfill business. At some point, you've got to buy more property around you. You've got to be thinking 10 years down the road. And whether it's by eminent domain or whether it's a peaceful purchase or whatever, that's up to you and the property owner. But you've got to have a 10-year plan. You've got to have a three-year plan minimum on these expansion sales. Now granted, you're new at this and, and he's very, very new at this. But, you know, this thing where it got down to, to a very short period of time to get this extra settlement there is a real problem. The bottom line is on this stuff, this $35 a ton because we're out of state. If you don't want our trash, you're telling us you don't want it. There's a transfer station down here off of Wisniew Street. Santech operates. We dump in there for $34.50 every load, every single load. We save 11 gallons of fuel and an hour and a half in labor by not coming to Walker County. At the rates we give you where you're tripling your money versus your cost of putting the material in the ground, you're tripling it. If you can't make money by tripling your money or quadrupling it, we could see a couple of dollar increases going from $19.50 a ton to $35 a ton. And I'm not even sure you can legally because of trade restriction. I don't know if you can charge me 35 because I cross the state line and charge him 30. This is an excessive increase. It is. In, in the realm of trash hauling and in the realm of the landfill business, these increases are, are too much. Couple bucks a ton, three bucks a ton, okay. But when you're almost doubling the price for the hauler, you're telling us which between all five or six, how many of us, five or six, Teresa, that come down here? How many Chattanooga haulers are coming in here?
There's probably about seven.
Okay. If you, if you want to get rid of $60,000 or $70,000 a month, give us the increases. I've talked to four of us today. Shawn Sims and some of the others said, well, March 1st, we're done. So we want to keep bringing you money, but we can't, I can't drive by a place five minutes from my shop that's going to say $34.50 a ton and we'll transfer it, put it in a tractor-trailer and run it up to Cleveland and you don't spend your time and your labor. I can't drive right past that on the way to Walker County so I can come down here and dump it out for 50 cents more a ton and spend all that time in fuel.
Okay. Appreciate your comments. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to remove the trustees that are currently listed on the Lincoln 457B deferred compensation plan from BB Haskell, Bridget Garrett, Merlyn Miller, and changing to Sole Commissioner Shannon Whitfield as the administrator. Please see Exhibit B authorized authority to sign to Walker County clerk Rebecca Wooton. Please see Exhibit C, the ability to sign to Human Resource Director Charlene Robertson. So I've got these here. It says, removing of the current administrator BB Haskell from 457B deferred compensation plan and removing of the signing authority of Bridget Garrett and Merlyn of the Lincoln 457B deferred compensation. Please be advised this is effective January 1, 2017. I was elected Sole Commissioner of Walker County. As such, I am the 457B deferred compensation plan administrator with full authority to sign and to delegate additional county officials to sign as necessary, Lincoln Financial Group documents regarding this plan. This was requirement from Lincoln that we have this document to them and put this in our record. All three of the signers on this account before are no longer county employees. So we're at a crossroads where we had no one internally at the county that could sign any documents on this 457B plan for Lincoln. So this was at their request that we get this done. So if we have anyone that wants to draw out their retirement or do a rollover, transfer, any of those type of things, they'll be able, we can execute those documents. Okay. We have a settlement order for civil case 165 UCV 0771, Walker County, Compton order for versus Stan Rotlow Jr. and Jill Marie Weiss, Condonnee. Please see the Exhibit E. I'll read one of these. Basically both the same. We've got two of them here tonight. And we'll talk about this a little bit. This is the above, excuse me, this is Walker County, political subdivision of the state of Georgia, Condonore versus 08.42 acres of land and 0.490 acres of land, Stan Rotlow Jr. and Jill Marie Weiss. Says the order, the above and foregoing matter coming before the court upon the petition to set aside a declaration of taking filed in the above styled action by Walker County, Georgia pursuant to the OCGA 32-3-11 and based upon the agreement of the parties as evidenced by their signatures to this order. This court's entered an order on November 17, 2016 granting the taking of certain property of the Condonee. The Condonees have filed a petition to set aside the declaration of taking and has filed an appeal of the previous order. This court finds that there has been a change in administration since the filing of the petition in this case. And the new Sole Commissioner has been elected as the governing body of Walker County, Georgia. Commissioner does not wish to proceed further with this action. The parties agreed that the previous order of this court dated November 17, 2016 should be set aside, vacated and annulled. And this court concludes that pursuant to OCGA 32-3-11, said order should be vacated. The parties further agreed that all appeals motions and other matters relating to the arising of this dispute should be dismissed. It is hereby ordered that the order of the court dated November 17, 2016 and the above entitled action is set aside, vacated and annulled in accordance with OCG 32-3-11. And all the provisions of said order shall hereby declare null and void and all appeals, claims, pending motions and parties related to or arising out of the litigations hereby dismissed. It is further ordered that the title of the subject property shall revert to the Condonees. It is further ordered that the clerk of the Superior Court is directed to pay all funds deposited with him as part of this action to Walker County, Georgia. And it is marked that this action dismissed, interminated pursuant to this order, sole ordered as a place for the date for the judge to sign. Arch Ferris, the attorney in Somerville that represents the other party, has a place for me to sign as Commissioner and also Robert Smalley was the attorney that had been hired by Walker County that started into this original condemnation. In summary, what this was, this was a road up on Lookout Mountain. Vulcan Drive was the private road name of that road that was owned by Stan and Jill. And back on November the 17th, BB Haskell entered into an order to take that road. So since that was an actual road, the way the state law is set up is the local government has the ability to take that road without notice. They can take it immediately of the judge signing that order. No questions asked, they can just take it. And so they did a condemnation or an immediate take of this road to try to pull a situation where they could go in there immediately and start grading and start trying to make an additional trail. For five years, or maybe longer than five years.
Eight years.
Eight years, Walker County was trying to take the position that Walker County had a quitclaim deed on this property. There's a lot of history that Jill Weiss could share with you about the ups and downs of that. But it was very interesting on the court hearing on November 17th that the attorney representing Walker County, which was Robert Smalley, in his opening statements admitted that Walker County had come to the conclusion through further investigation and title search that Walker County did not have a quitclaim of this property. And therefore they were having to do this immediate take and do this condemnation because Walker County didn't own it after all. The only reason that I was there at that hearing is I had got wind that this was going and taking place. So I had to hire an attorney to represent me as the incoming commissioner. I notified Jill and Stan, they had to reactivate their attorney. And we were all there waiting for the order to be delivered to the judge. They didn't know we were going to be there. Because again, they can do an immediate take. They can just take this with getting a judge's signature. So they thought they were going to be able to go in the judge's chamber, get the judge to sign the order, and the next day they were going to start knocking trees down. So by state law, the judge was bound by that order to sign that order. And my attorney agreed with him. He had to sign that order. But what he did have the ability to do was to put a 60-day stay on that order to keep anyone from disturbing that, that land, knocking down these trees, tearing up the, the mountain for a trail. And so the judge did enter into an order for a 60-day stay. It has been extended a couple of times because as I told Stan and Jill and the other parties, I wanted to make sure that I was making an informed decision and that it was, if it was or was not in the best interest of Walker County to continue to maintain that land. Because it was, the way I looked at it, it was taken away from private owners that was trying to mind their own business for the greater public use of Walker County. And after doing some research through the different organizations that do trails and looking at the regional commission and studying and reading different documents and trying to get myself up to speed on this, I didn't see that there was any benefit for Walker County to own this property. And so we have gone back and forth with the language and documentation and trying to get this where we kind of crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is, so to speak. Jill and Stan have been very professional, very good to work with. And I don't see that it's in good order for Walker County to continue to spend thousands of dollars to try to develop trails when we're broke. So we wanted to settle one of our lawsuits and get this behind us. And we've come to a mutual agreement and understanding. And so the courts will be paying back the money out of escrow back to Walker County for where the previous administration actually took this property from private citizens for development of a trail. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I'm going to make a seat, some minor yes or no because it really doesn't pertain to, you know, the property, so to speak. Are we, and I'll read it, but, but, is Walker County abandoning the Durham Trail completely?
The Durham Trail, it says, is Walker County abandoning the Durham Trail project completely? The situation that we're in is we don't have the money to continue to do any work as far as trying to build trails anywhere in the county. And we sure don't want to do it by condemning people's personal property.
Absolutely. You know, I've, I've.
So the existing, there's a lot of existing trails up there. Many of those. Many of those are in conservation easements. Some of them are owned by different landholding organizations to preserve those.
Well, I'm only talking about the Durham, just the Durham Trail that goes through four or five pieces of property, which the only piece that wasn't completed was the one that our pre-last administration was trying to take.
Well, what has been determined, and the previous administration finally come full circle and admitted, is Walker County does not own the rights to the old Durham line.
Okay.
Those have reverted back to the property owners, and so.
Hey, okay, that was one of my other questions. So, the property that, the trail, let's see, like I said, we need to read it verbatim. Since you're returning Mrs. Weiss, Mr. Lowes' property, will the other property that was included or that was part of the Durham Trail, is Walker County going to be deeding that back to the original owners then?
Which property are you speaking of?
Well, there's, I think it's four or five. If you look at the map of the trail, the way it runs, it runs through four or five other people's property.
We'll just have to look and see what other ownership's been done, or if that was sold or if it was donated. I mean, I don't know all the circumstances of all those.
We do know, we can tell.
But I don't think they were done by condemnation, were they?
No, they most certainly were not. And when you talk four or five pieces of property, the initial section of the Durham Trail that comes off of Durham Road actually crosses Little Lake Land Trust property.
Right.
The Gaskin-Malloy property, the Gaskin-Malloy actually granted that easement to Little Lake, not to Walker County. And then, the second part was taken by Don Oliver intimidating and browbeating Jackson Wingfield to give his property up, which he traded because Don's threatened and said, "If you don't give me that property, then I'm going to take this trail right down through the middle of your property, right by your creek." So, that is a section that Walker County has, which I hope they do give that back to Jackson. It's only fair.
Right, that's a question.
The third piece of it. And that, might I add, is the only part that's on the railroad bed. The rest of the railroad bed had been caved in. The third section is a Warren, Mr. Warren had given permission for the people to go up on a road that goes over the railroad bed. Now, we've never been able to see a deed. We've asked for one, never furnished one, so we don't know what kind of agreement that Mr. Warren has and if there is even an agreement. And then, it goes across to land that was given, not donated, but given in consideration for money to, from the Gaston Rail Estate. Now, Gaston's been dead, I knew Gaston. Gaston would pitch a fit over that going to a trail because he really treasured his property. But where it goes across trestle number 14, if you go and look, and I actually brought my computer with pictures, it comes across the trestle. The trestle, for years, people dumped there. We don't know how they got in, but if you look off the side, there's 70 tires that we counted the other day that are visible, car chassis, truck chassis, and that's the park that Don Oliver had claimed that we had been blocking, which is ridiculous.
Yeah, I walked the whole trail that time when I called you. I walked the whole trail.
Yeah, well, then, did you, you saw the dump? You saw, and it's not even a trail. It's, and it's very, I mean.
Well, that's my, that's my original question is, I understand we're giving Mrs. Weiss, Mr. Lowes' property back. I don't have a problem with that. The, on the survey map, the Walker County map of property, it shows that trail running, intersecting, run, and dissecting other people's property. It is deeded by the county records to Walker County.
I'm sorry, I've got to interrupt once again, please.
Okay, go ahead.
Just on the Walker County GIS, and this is something that we had spoken to the prior administration, if you, if you look where it's listed, it shows that Walker County got 17.42 acres of that trail from Jackson Wingfield, and it cites a deed number. You get that deed and you get that deed number and look at it, and the actual deed is for 1.42 acres of Jackson's property. Somehow, it got extended falsely to run all the way down as though that property was given to the county from Jackson, and Jackson never had ownership. It was a Don Oliverism.
So, is that something that needs to be changed on the, I mean.
It hasn't yet, but we hope it will be changed, but, well, I haven't even brought that up to Mr. Whitfield yet.
Because this was a pending issue that the courts either wanted to hear the appeal, hear the case, or get it settled. So, we were able to come to agreement on this, and it did not make sense for the county to continue on this. Your next question is, is there anything in writing stating that the grant money received from state agencies or any other entities will or will not have to be paid back on the project if not completed? One thing that I did learn in my research is that if you have condemnation of property, you cannot use grant money, federal or state, on condemnation property for trails. And so, the grant monies that have been done on any trail development does not affect this, nor has any grant money been applied for since, since I've taken office for this. So, I don't think that's going to be an issue. Has anyone attempted to find a way to continue the project by bypassing Ms. Weiss or Mr. Lowes' property? I have no intentions of doing any trails anywhere in Walker County because we don't have the money to do it, and even if we got grants, they would want matching money. We don't have the matching money for the grants. Has the EPD, excuse me, EPA fines that were incurred by the previous administration been paid? If not, do you intend to pay them and when? I haven't yet found any documentation of this yet. I know it was talked a lot about during the campaign. I have not heard from them, seen them, or have received anything, any correspondence from them, so that is, at this time, an unsettled issue at this point.
Are we, are we going to pursue or just kind of?
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna get it handled and settled, and we'll just have to enter into the conversation with the EPD to see what we've got to do to bring resolution to it as well and get that behind us. It may or may not include, you know, money. I don't know yet, so we haven't had that conversation. And then, we'll get to the, your other questions on the other, I'll see what you want to write down.
Can I say one more thing, please?
Yes.
I just want to clarify, Don Oliver had put out so much false information about this that he called and says that where that goes through our property was Vulcan Drive, but actually by the county road records, Vulcan Drive stopped at the gate, and that was our driveway, that he was calling a road, which it had never been. So, anyway, thank you.
Yeah, it's.
No, it's, it's gone on way too long. It needs to be settled. I mean, it's been.
Thank you, it has. And we've spent a lot of money on that too, but we should never have spent.
Yeah, I mean, we spent about $350,000 pretty much on building, I guess.
Actually, not 350, but it was, it was a lot, but it wasn't 350. I've got all that documentation, I'll share it when you have time.
St. Jill, something to add?
I was just going to comment, as far as the road, I mean, you know, it's our driveway. It's, it, no one should infer that it's a public, that it was ever a public.
It was a private drive that had a road marker for, probably for 911 identification and emergencies or things of that nature.
That was it, to get down to the cabin, but it's, the gate had been there, and it had been there since the eighties, and we even, I mean, the road documentation and everything stops it at the gate. Don just tried to call it whatever he could to get what he wanted.
Ma'am, do you need somebody to come up there and pick up those tires and haul them and do it?
He saw what it was.
I may need your help.
Let me tell you, I'll give you the number.
You made a doubt?
Although it's all very quality.
Well, I need a better deal with you now.
I'm going to go ahead and sign this one. And then, I will board y'all with all of the reading of the, of the next one. It basically is stating the same thing, it's just, it's a different civil action. It's got some additional parties listed that are all family members of another parcel that they, they all own together. So, it's basically the same documentation. Okay, we have a resolution for a moratorium to accept. To acceptance of permitting and the related activities of hydraulic fracking and commercial deep well drilling. So, let me read this, we're official. Some of these gets a little long. It's a resolution adopting a moratorium on accepting or permitting and related activities for hydraulic fracturing and commercial deep well drilling, whereas the sole commissioner of Walker County is the county governing authority for Walker County, Georgia, whereas the government, excuse me, the Georgia constitution and general law of the state grant the local governing authority of each county jurisdiction to control all county property and to further adopt such ordinances and regulations as necessary to protect the public health, public safety, and general welfare of its citizens, whereas Walker County has adopted the planning and zoning ordinances, including the environmental criteria, planning ordinances, which are designed in part to preserve, restore, and enhance the quality of the environment of Walker County, and is, and is set to, and to set policies for the protection of particular sensitive environments, whereas said ordinance has the further purpose of regulating certain materials, facilities, and activities which if unregulated would have a potential to result in water table decline, pollution of groundwater, and surface water damage to wetlands, damage or deterioration of steep slope, mountain land, or other hazards and threats to the natural environment in Walker County, whereas Walker County finds it desirable and necessary to study the impact of hydraulic fracking or fracturing, known as fracking, and other commercial deep wa, deep well drilling into and around the underground aquifer and water supply watershed that supplies Walker County and its citizens with drinking water, whereas the Georgia Supreme Court has held that a moratorium with response to the application of a zoning ordinance may be put in place for a reasonable period of time without the necessity of complying with the notice requirements of the Georgia zoning procedure law, and whereas Walker County finds it appropriate that the moratorium barring for 180 days the acceptance of applications for permits pursuant to the county ordinance for construction and of any direct buildings and other structures for the purpose of fracking and deep well drilling in or around the underground aquifers in Walker County, and further barring any other activities related to fracking or commercial deep well drilling in and around the underground aquifer or its surface recharge area supplying water and its citizens with drinking water. Now, therefore be resolved that Walker County does hereby enact a moratorium barring for 180 days the acceptance of applications for permitting pursuant to and all status ordinances, regulations, rules, and requirements for the construction of any direct building or other structures for the purpose of fracking of commercial deep well drilling in or around the underground aquifer of Walker County, and further barring for 180 days any other activity relating to fracking of commercial deep well drilling in or around the underground aquifer or its surface recharge area supplying Walker County and its citizens with drinking water. The resolution shall be effective immediately upon approval of the public health, safety, and welfare demanding it so resolved and adopted this date, February the 23rd, be signed by Commissioner Walker County attested by Rebecca Wooden, Wooden, excuse me, County Clerk. Okay, it's a mouthful there. What we're doing here is in our planning and zoning ordinances, we don't have anything in the documents that really address these issues. And so, it's not that we're not going to prevent people from doing such activities, it's that the planning and zoning committee needs to study this, look at best practice, get policies, procedures, ordinances that we can put in place to be able to do any of this responsibly, or either to not do this responsibly, you know, to just not do it at all. So, I'm not making the decision tonight whether or not we are or are not doing this. This is to put a stop or put a stay for 180 days to say, timeout, we've got to research this, get on top of this, because this is a big exposure, because we can't live without water. And we've got a lot of underground water sources. Many of you know that on the other side of Taylor Ridge over in the western Murchie Valley area, they've been on wells over there forever, and they're just now putting in, as referred to as city water, in some of that area. Some of the residents have elected to hook onto that, some are still operating off their wells. So, if we don't put something in place, someone could go over that area and start fracking for natural gas, and wouldn't be anything that we could do or say about it. If they owned the property or had the mineral rights, they could do that, and they could contaminate the water and pack up, leave, and move on. Same thing with the aquifer that's very well-known in the north end of our county that runs through the Chickamauga area. Someone could actually come and drill a well and tap into that aquifer, and there wouldn't be any regulations or any guidance or volume restrictions or anything that could be done. They could tap into that aquifer that's currently supplying a large portion of our, of our county for that drinking water. So, we've got a lot of risk here. We've got a lot of potential exposure that's not been addressed, and what this resolution does is just slows things down to keep someone from coming and doing something that would come in and harm our water supply. We also have a large, a robust cave system in our county, especially around our mountain areas. We don't want to contaminate our caves with fracking fluid, because once it's there, it'd probably be there forever. So, in our region, with the amount of underground water supply that we have and the amount of caves that we have in our area, this is something we need to really, really take a serious look at and consider through some in-depth study and planning if we want to move forward with eliminating the possibility of fracking or leave that opportunity open, and if so, how do we regulate it? How do we monitor it? How do we control it? So, this is to try to protect your drinking water, so we're not one of those cases that they show on 60 Minutes.
I'm just to send a message, just to prove it, saying if there hasn't been three or four companies coming up asking to crack.
There has been some level of interest in the region, let's say, for both of these. So, we're trying to be proactive and make sure that we're doing what's best for the citizens of Walker County and not for commercial business. Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll enter into this resolution.
All right, I know we've got a lot of reading here tonight, and I hate to bore y'all, but we've got to do this by the borderline. Have a resol, or a resolution adopting a moratorium and accepting applications and permits relating to residential use of cargo container homes and tiny houses. Before we go into this one, Joe, show us some examples, because I know a lot of people probably didn't realize today potentially what cargo containers were. Here's one picture of a cargo container. Yeah, y'all come on in, we'll let y'all look at this. We'll leave this up here for a minute. Basically, shipping containers that you see where they're moving products across the ocean on these large ocean carriers, where they're going from the United States to foreign countries and bringing product to and from. There is a movement across our country where people are taking these and popping them up across the country and being very creative in what they can do with those. This request has come from ours, our zoning official, that we don't have anything in our regulations to address how this is dealt with. These are some examples that are probably not as desirable as you'd like to have next door to you. You can also Google search, and you will find some online that look like $500,000-plus houses that are very, very impressive. And so, it's not that this can't be done the right way, but as you can see, there's one there that doesn't look that bad. But right now, we don't have anything in place to address this from one extreme or the other. So, basically, you can see how high do you stack them? You know, what areas do you allow any of this to take place in the county? So, we've got to put some guidelines in place to protect you as the current citizen and to protect primarily your property value. If someone wants to put something like any type of structure in your community, we hope that they're doing it to increase their property value and your property value. We don't want to start issuing permits on things that are going to decrease your value or things that are, do not have the life safety and the facilities that need to be put in place for safe, habitable living. So, our planning and zoning committee's got a lot of work to do. This is nothing new across the country, but again, we've got to be proactive.
This is nothing new across the country, but again, we've got to be proactive until this becomes a problem. And so being the new commissioner coming in, I would rather just put the timeout on this and let's talk about it, let's review it. Those planning meetings or public meetings, you can go and have public comment, public input, and be a part of the process. So this is not the end-all, the final. I know there's been a lot of comment on Facebook, some of my old critics I thought had left the country or Mac, and glad that they're awake. And there's no hidden agenda here, this is just simply to try to be proactive and make sure that this office is protecting you and your property and your property values and life safety. So, gonna have to borrow you with the fine print. Resolution adopting a moratorium and accepting application permits relating to residence use of cargo container houses and tiny houses. Whereas the sole commissioner of Walker County and the county governing authority for Walker County, Georgia, whereas the Georgia constitution and general law of the state grants the local governing authority of each county jurisdiction to control all county property and to further adopt such ordinances and regulations as necessary to protect the public health, public safety, and general welfare of its citizens. Whereas under authority of the constitution of the state of Georgia, OCGA 8-2-170, a county may establish standards, conditions, and an inspection program for previewing manufactured homes. Whereas promotion and maintenance of property values within the jurisdiction and the health and general welfare of the citizens of Walker County are further by adopting of standards for the condition of structures, including pre-owned manufactured homes. Whereas Walker County has previously adopted land use and zoning ordinances regulating the placement of manufactured homes in the unincorporated area of the county. Whereas Walker County deems it necessary and desirable to study the health and safety of cargo container homes, metal structures typically used for transporting cargo, and tiny houses, structures having less than 500 square feet, as well as to study the impact and such structures would have on existing communities within our county. Whereas the Georgia Supreme Court has held that a moratorium with response to applications of zoning ordinances may be put in place for a reasonable period of time without the necessary necessity of complying with the notice requirement of the Georgia zoning procedure law. And whereas Walker County finds it appropriate that the moratorium barring 180 days the acceptance of applications for permits pursuant to said county ordinance for placement or use of cargo container homes and tiny homes for human dwelling in Walker County and further barring any other activity relating to the residential use of such cargo container homes and tiny homes. Now therefore be it resolved that Walker County does hereby enact a moratorium barring for 180 days the acceptance of any application for permit pursuant to any and all statutes, ordinances, regulations, rules, and requirements for use or placement for intended use of cargo container homes and tiny homes for human dwellings in Walker County and further barring any other activities related to the residential use of such cargo container homes and tiny houses. The resolution shall be effective immediately upon its approval for public health, safety, and welfare demanding it so resolved and adopted 23rd day, the day's still the 23rd, yeah, 23rd day to February 2017. One thing I feel to mention, this also does address the tiny homes, that's an area that's seems to be maybe a little more desirable, but there's nothing, again, in our ordinance that really addresses this the way we need to be able to address it, because you call something that comes in prefabricated, already complete on wheels, a tiny home, or is that a mobile home? When we have conversation with the tax office, they don't agree that that is a mobile home, because they say it doesn't have a serial number on it. So we've got some things like that to work out of how we would even tax those improvements, whether it is a mobile home, a tiny home, or what we're dealing with. So we've got some taxing issues to work out, we've got some life safety issues to work out. It's not that we're not going to allow this, it's to be determined, but again, it's just kind of a timeout to address and allow the committee to do the job that it's been asked to do and to allow for public input and public comment at those meetings. And also for additional public input and comment at additional commissioners' meetings where we would address publicly any ordinances or any changes needed to implement the proper procedure of any recommendations that would come from planning and zoning. So we have our chairman for planning and zoning with us and one of our planning and zoning staff people with us. Do y'all need to want, have any things you want to add? I know I'm putting you up the spot.
We have taken it up and we're beginning to try to go through some of the procedures that need to be done, because you're present in town, you could put that in an R2 zoning. I don't think anybody wants one of those next door to their $200,000 house or $300,000 house or whatever, so, present in town, that's a lot of different details about it.
So that's Philip Cantrell, he's the chairman of the planning and zoning committee. And so they've got their work cut out for them. And as he indicates, that there's no regulations in our county at this point, and this could create some abusive problems. And that's what we're trying to prevent, is problems and lawsuits. Any other questions, comments? Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, thank you. Here he has.
Oh, well, actually, Jen, I know Mr. Cantrell, I can talk to him.
Okay, so you're good?
Yeah, because this is a moratorium, I just, most of that was about...
Psychotile?
Yeah, was about other stuff.
We're good. Anybody else?
Did you say they were going to have meetings and the public was invited?
Yes, y'all meet the third Thursday at...
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock at the Walker County Civic Center. Third Thursday at seven o'clock, Walker County Civic Center every month.
If that's going to be a topic or something new that's going to be looked at, we will run ahead in the paper.
Under that community?
In the public notice.
Okay, yeah, so there'll be public notices going out about that. So this is not something that's going to be done in one of those meetings, it's going to take some time. I worked through this, so this is not going to operate in a vacuum, and you come back to the next commissioners' meeting and this is done and settled, this is not going to move that fast. It's going to be very optimistic to get it done in 180 days.
Janet, I know everybody's waiting off the grid. When I was working, I found a few. They don't have to do anything, they call it a utility building and they live in it. If it's completely off the grid.
That's some of the things that we're going to have to address and determine if that's the way we want it to be. So that's a good point.
Yeah, LA, neither.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
That's now, but hey.
Hey.
Senior citizens love the tiny house idea. We love that. And I want you to do us a big favor, watch out for us, for those of us that own a little property in Walker County. We need for you to protect us and make sure that we don't have any more restrictions or bars or vans or anything else that's going to affect our property.
Yeah, and I appreciate your comments, good to see you. Sorry to get recognized, it's been many years. But yeah, this is all in trying to protect everybody and make sure that we have a plan for what we're doing when it comes to tiny houses and make sure everybody's safe. And right now, somebody could, you know, somebody could bring a tiny house in and not properly secure it or have the proper tie-downs. I mean, we just don't have anything there that can be regulated or enforced. Some people may do the right thing on their own, but there's nothing that we're consistent on. And that's what we've got to try to do, is get where we're consistent.
It seems like if they were taxed, we're having no problem paying our bills in Walker County, we're having to borrow money to pay our bills. And maybe if we make sure all property taxes are collected that are current, and then we make sure that we tax little houses and whatever else people are living in. If you're a property owner and that's your piece of property, you need to pay tax on it.
Well, part of the issue we've got on the taxing, mobile homes are taxed one way, and there's done, I think in May of every year, they have a sticker that goes in the window versus a house that's built is taxed, you know, and is due on December 20th. So it's two kind of different classes. And so we've got to be able to identify and put in our ordinance so the tax office will know how to proceed from a taxing evaluation and even what time of the year the taxes even build out and is even due versus from a mobile home to a house. So there's quite a few things there to work through. Anybody else?
Yes, I appreciate very much that you are planning on having public input about this pursuit.
And that you're making the regulations, because I think they need to be in place for sure, and to also pull out a proper tax structure for them. But I would strongly caution about this issue, as we discuss it in future public meetings, that surrounding areas are trying to combat homelessness with this very structure of living. And that they, the people that are against this solution for the homeless will use your ordinance that you make, whatever it is. And I know that it will be good, because you're saying that it will be good. But I'm just, again, I'm just strongly cautioning you about the restrictions that you do make, because they will, other people will use it for malicious reasons to shut down homeless projects that may be going on around the area. So I look forward to being in the public input.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, anything else on this? All right, we'll go ahead and enter into this resolution.
Have you got to the treehouses yet? I think brought those down there for a built, really?
Okay, we're getting close to the end, folks. All right, we've got another resolution here I need to read to you, this one's much shorter. Resolution reducing of county personnel costs, whereas the sole commissioner of Walker County is the county governing authority for Walker County, Georgia, whereas OCGA 36-813 requires county governing authorities to adopt and operate under an annual budget, balanced budget, well, that's a key word, balanced budget. Whereas achieving and maintaining a balanced budget in 2017 fiscal year requires continued efforts to reduce county spending, whereas the sole commissioner deems the reduction of county personnel costs to be necessary stepped in maintaining a balanced county budget in the 2017 fiscal year. And whereas a review of the medical, dental, and vision insurance benefit plans jointly hereafter health plan has shown that a reduction of county personnel costs can be obtained by clarifying the eligibility requirements for such health insurance plans. Now therefore be it resolved that only those employees and their dependents who are currently full-time employees of Walker County shall be eligible to receive health and dental plan benefits from Walker County unless coverage is otherwise required by law or is provided by express written agreement with Walker County. And it be further resolved that Walker County's payment and cost for the health and dental benefits coverage for those individuals and their dependents who are not full-time employees shall be terminated as of April 1st, 2017, unless otherwise required by law or express agreement with Walker County, so as sole resolved and adopted 23rd day of February What has brought this to surface, as we have been reconciling through billing statements and looking at staff levels and different things, it brought to our attention that I think we had on first pass, I think it was 14?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, excuse me. Seventeen former past employees of Walker County that were still receiving all or a portion of employee benefits pertaining to healthcare and dental care. And when you have a self-insured program, that can get expensive really quick. And so this resolution basically puts into play that any previous agreements, any documentation, any retirement perceived settlements, or any of those type things are being superseded by this resolution stating that as of April 1st, 2017, and going forward, that these people will no longer be offered health or dental insurance through Walker County unless at this time they want to sign up for COBRA. And COBRA is 102% of the cost, so they pay 100% of the premium cost and the 2% administration fee that gets to the 102% of the cost. They can do that for how long?
Eighteen months.
Up to 18 months. Many of these that we found are already eligible for Medicare and have just continued to stay on the county insurance to continue to drive up costs for Walker County government. So this was something that we spent quite a bit of time looking into and researching and working through our underwriters who manages our programs and manages our claims for us. And they were not aware this was going on. And this is something that we've also have sent these individuals that fit this profile, for lack of terms, we sent them certified letters back three weeks ago, about three weeks ago, we sent them all certified letters to their known address to let them know that this was coming. We're not trying to be ugly or mean or give anyone a situation where they don't have time to react or respond or to sign up for other coverages or go to the marketplace or go to Medicare. So since they're having a loss of coverage, then they would qualify to go to another carrier and sign up or be able to activate services through Medicare and so forth. So we are, basically after this resolution, we're saying from April 1st forward, you've got to be an employee, you've got to be full-time, and you've got to be active to continue to receive benefits from Walker County government. Any questions, comments?
Were they paying?
They were paying the employee portion.
So they were watching them check?
Yes.
Any round figures as to how much this is going to save Walker County?
I don't remember.
Well, you take, it's about $700 for medical and dental, and they were paying about $100, about $120.
I know one early spreadsheet I saw that was, that Ida had done, was over 60, over $60,000 annual.
How many hours, how many hours will he cost these full-time employees?
Twenty, thirty?
Thirty.
Thirty hours?
Thirty, thirty hours will be a full-time employee. And that's pretty much the standard now.
Was that benefit offered to everyone, any terminators?
For previous retired employees. We've, some of the most recent ones had been on there since May of 2014.
Janet, I filed under that, I didn't get a letter, but I gladly take the hit if it'll help the county.
Are you retired?
I have the dental insurance.
Are you retired?
Yeah.
You won't have those things.
We'll have to check into that.
Thank you.
You have to tell them that you just won't have them.
All right, anything else? Okay. That finally brings us to the end of the regular scheduled meeting, so I'll call this meeting adjourned. That finally brings us to the end of the regular scheduled meeting, so I'll call this meeting adjourned.